In your loving hand. Our dear friend and colleague, Mr. Zach McKay. We're all concerned about his health. Lord, we know right now everything is in your hands. We pray that you provide the healing that he needs to continue his life strong, continue to make a contribution to our great society. Lord, watch over our proceedings today. Allow us to work with diligence and foresight to bring about the kind of change and growth we need for this county. Allow us to work with a sense of purpose and to more better our own understanding of the world. Just to your will in these works and not our own. And so we ask for these blessings in the matchless name of your son, Jesus the Christ. Say amen.
Amen.
Bringing information now and according to South Carolina Code Law nineteen seventy six is amended. The Man Star Moses Enterprise have been notified the date, time, place and agenda of this meeting. Item four approval minutes from October ten.
Second.
We got a motion second and discussion on the move. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. The ayes have it. This time we need to recess our regular meeting and open a public hearing. Motion second, discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. The ayes have it. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, those in attendance. We have one item for public hearing this evening. This is for ordinance twenty twenty three dash one two. An ordinance to approve a master lease for various office spaces located in the county's property located at thirteen oh five North Main Street Marion. To authorize the lease for use with each future tenant by county resolution only, authorize county administrator to execute such lease for each and every tenant on an ongoing basis and authorize all of the matters related there too. Anybody in attendance that we should speak for get this order. Hearing none, that would conclude our necessity of public hearing.
All right, we need to adjourn our public hearing, reconvene our regular meeting. Motion second, discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise, the ayes have it. Item seven resolutions.
Uh, where is anything I have?
I have one and uh, you didn't get the copy. Uh, Mr. Jack Edwards. And I emailed one to Sabrina today and I brought a copy tonight. Um, his service to the community throughout his church days and all has been outstanding and um, he's from Marion. And I thought I put it in my pocket in my campaign. But I can bring it back. Does it or brings it down? You need a copy of it. I'll give you a copy of it. Jack Edwards.
You made that in form of motion.
Yes.
Okay, got a second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. The ayes have it. Is there any theory on this?
Well, I talked with Sabrina today. We don't know if we can get it. They were going to try to have some kind of service or a church. And we don't know if we can do it next weekend. Is that possible?
I think so.
We got a fast log.
I think so.
Yeah, well, I'll get that to you. I probably got my head.
All right, item eight, ordinance.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. We have uh, two on the agenda that we're going to handle tonight. So I'll start with item A. It's the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero nine. You've had a copy of this since first reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a purchase agreement and development agreement between Man County, South Carolina and Project Sippi, authorizing the conveyance of property from the county to Project Sippi upon satisfaction of certain conditions set forth in the purchase agreement and development agreement and addressing, addressing other matters related there too. And take action on second reading.
So, second.
Got a motion, got a second and discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. The ayes have it, motion passes.
Item B is still on hold. I haven't heard anything from their attorneys. Any movement on that. Item C, this is third reading. This is one for which we just had the public hearing. Third reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash one two, an ordinance to approve a master lease for various office spaces located in the county's property located at thirteen oh five North Main Street Marion to authorize the lease for use with each future tenant by county resolution only. Authorize the county administrator to execute such leaves for each and every tenant on an ongoing basis and to authorize all of the matters related there too. You've had a full copy of that ordinance and second reading. Take action on third reading please.
So, second.
Motion second. Any discussion on the move? Yeah, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. The ayes have it. Committee number one. Sabrina, as far as I know, there's nothing before committee number one. We have nothing at this time. Committee number two, Mr. Tenny.
I'm nothing at this time, it's true.
Legal update.
I don't have anything of a legal nature necessarily, but and I don't want to steal your thunder if you want to help us, but I I mentioned to you before, because of my move, it is now official. We received our CEO yesterday, so I'm moving in. I've changed my address. So I had to resign as this council member of the PD Regional Airport Commission. Uh, so that seat uh, will be up now for someone else to to fill that role um, in the future. So thank you for the opportunity to serve in that capacity.
How many seats do we have on that?
We have two. Joe Powell has had one for some time and then I was the other.
Okay.
So we need to make some recommendations.
You want to think about it?
I would like to get the duties of them. So if we think we got somebody that might be willing to go to those meetings and forms and bring back your next meeting. That's what's count.
Any requirements or anything?
Yeah.
Meeting, any meetings a month, what you're expecting to do?
It it's it's one meeting a month. I can figure in a little bit on that, just so you can think about it going forward. Um, it's it's once a month is the meeting. It's usually in the afternoon on a Wednesday. I think it's the day four o'clock. Uh, it it is, it's certainly not a, a a figure role, let's say it that way. Is that, I would definitely make sure you appoint someone that can fill that role because it is an extremely important body that does a lot of work. It is pretty intensive. It actually surprised me, the level of activity that was going on with that commission. So um, it is definitely one of major importance to get the right individual plugged into that.
And they need to be in Marion County, yes.
Yes.
Oh, I I do have one question too. Have we finalized the process of meeting uh, the need for the sundown where it's set beside uh, the community park?
No, sir. We, we had an email back from, what date was that email? Uh, the thirteenth?
Yeah.
I think it was October the thirteenth. Uh, their attorney told me that they were moving forward with that and working on it. I followed up again yesterday to ask for a follow-up and I hadn't heard anything back yet.
Or are there any encumbrances on that property?
Not that I'm aware of. It's the same chain of title from where we received the other part, the, the park, well, I say park. The track where we received that some time ago. It's out of the same chain of title. I looked at that and it hasn't been any changes since then. So.
Well, I had some where the uh, constituents, couple of them asked me to make sure that there's no uh, in the original conveyance that the party, they probably wouldn't revert back to the original owner. It's no longer used as a school.
Um, I'm, I'm not aware of that. If that, if that's there, that's specifically on the school building. Um, so I'd have to look at that title. The way we usually do these that we've always done with school board, anytime we get those items, they tender the information from me to me and then I order the title search based on what he gives me. Cause I never really know exactly where the source of title is coming from. Um, a lot of times it's, especially in that property, it's going back two or three names ago in the, in the district um, of where it was originally vested. So until I get that information from him to, to order that search, I don't, I really don't have anything to operate on.
You got anything else?
No, sir.
All right, item eleven, Mr. William Walker, Marion County Pilot Group. Getting Mark Genret.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here on behalf of a twenty-three member group. Yeah, okay. This is Mark Genret. He's the commander of our CAP squadron and we both want to address you. So I'll do mine first. I'm here on behalf of a twenty-three member group, the Marion County Pilots and Air Crew Association. And I'd uh, like to make a few comments on the way uh, things going at the airport. First, we want to thank you for the resurfacing and lengthening of the runway. We also want to thank you for the management initiative since October the ninth that have resolved nearly every issue from our members with management. You've sent us a good partner and our new airport director, Charles Taylor, uh, and a good listener in his boss, interim county administrator, Travis Watford. Our members feel we've changed in a few short days from an adversarial relationship uh, with airport management to partnership and that's the way it should be. Our new airport director met with most of our pilots group during the first day on the job. He listened to our concerns. He dealt with uh, nearly all of us within a two-day, with all the problems within a two-day period. He's met with us twice more and we've established a good two-way flow of information. It may seem a small matter to you, but to us it's significant that uh, we now have after-hours access to the terminal building and use of the restrooms and the meeting room, which is headquarters for our civil air patrol squadron. We've already uh, had multiple opportunities to speak with the interim administrator and the airport director about our concerns from modernizing the airport and fully incorporating it into the county economic development plan. Uh, we do not want our airport to be a perennial economic drain on the county. We feel that uh, the quickest, that is the quickest way to lose the confidence of the community and of the council. We know you're working the issue also. New paving project provides a county with a first-class mile-long runway and we can see that the airport leadership is striving to develop the airport as a friendly and economical stopover for transiting aircraft. That will help build our fuel sales and it promotes our county. Our group wants to be a part of involving the Marion community, Marion County community and the airport, particularly our school kids who will one day be our leaders. I grew up in the fifties, the sixties, a two-minute horseback ride, horseback from the primary airport in Marion County. That was the old Nichols Grass Field where my dad flew and taught me about aviation. We have fuel at Nichols Field, a licensed mechanic, a flight instructor, a training aircraft, a crop spraying operation, a civil air patrol squadron and the planes of many of the pilots from Mullins and Marion and some from O'Ree. In nineteen seventy-four, our county built a paved airport and terminal between Marion and Mullins and it was superior to Nichols Field. But over the past two decades, in which I've had an aircraft at the airport, and I do now, we have not sufficiently uh, kept up with the changes and uh, modernized. I understand that you're addressing the major issues we've discussed such as new terminal, additional hangars, an aircraft mechanic on the field, an avionics repair shop, a parallel taxiway, even a flight school. In my professional life, I write about airports nationwide and it is a cold hard fact that no airport stands uh, still economically. Either it declines as a facility or it improves. I, I sense that we're going to improve. As I noted, our pilots group hopes that our airport leadership can reach out to the Marion County community, particularly families and young people, so the wide-ranging value of the airport can be better understood. Our group is volunteered to help with an aviation open house, our fly-in to increase the flow of air traffic and community members to our airport. We hear you have some initiatives under consideration for community and pilot outreach and we offer our support. I'd like to close on personal note, if I can. I'm primarily involved in three volunteer activities in the county. The American Legion Post at Nichols where I'm the commander of thirty-three veterans, the safety officers of the CAP serving under Captain Genret uh, and where we're eighteen strong and the Pilots Association with nearly two dozen aviators, many of them civic and business leaders in our county and state. There's a common trait among our members in those three groups. We take pride in our county and are more than willing to give of our time to help when help is needed. Don't hesitate to call on us and thank you again for what you've done and are doing to revitalize our airport. We see the results of your efforts every day at the airport and know that that is a good thing for our county's future.
I just like had a little bit to what Mr. Bill is talking about. Uh, I'm the squadron commander of the uh, Civil Air Union here in Marion. Uh, we've uh, we've been a squadron, I think next year will be fifty years of been service in uh, in Marion County. So uh, we've got a long history here in Marion. Um, we have eighteen squadrons in the state. We have nine aircraft in the state and we also uh, Marion was the, actually the first squadron in the state of South Carolina. So with that said, a little bit about our missions, we do uh, summer exercises, we do emergency services, we do homeland security. We do hurricane routes, uh, we watch uh, uh, ride after disasters and you get pitched back to FEMA and those type of uh, uh, things. We also across the state, we have exercises. We do SOR exercises with the wing in Columbia. We all get together and practice these missions. Um, with that, we also have pilot cleans across the state. And seeing the improvements that we had here in Marion, the, all the positive and we're all excited about the uh, the uh, new things is going on. I wouldn't be far-fetched to be able to get uh, maybe a wing to hold some of these exercises in Marion with all the new improvements that's just coming our way. Um, and with that being said, we like to uh, thank the uh, interim administrator and our uh, airport director and the boards for helping uh, with all these great uh, improvements in Marion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming and we'll brief you your comments. Mr. Dylan Coleman, Lincoln PD Rivers Project Coordinator.
Good afternoon. My name is Deborah Bufkin. I'm the executive director of Winial Rivers Alliance. I'm also a Mullins native and I want to thank you guys. Thank you all, gentlemen, ladies, for taking, giving us a few minutes to speak to you about Winial Rivers Alliance. Uh, we are a nonprofit conservation organization. Uh, we are your river keepers. We monitor all the rivers that flow into the Winial Bay. Our mission is to protect, preserve, monitor and revitalize the health and the lands of the greater Winial Bay watershed, which is also, as I'm sure you know, the lower PD basin. Again, we are your river keepers. We monitor the rivers and seven rivers in North and South Carolina. We monitor the Lumber River, the Waukesha River, the Little PD, the Big PD, the Lynch's and the Black and the Sandpit Rivers. Uh, my office is at Coastal, although I'm a Mullins native. Like I said, go auctioneers, just saying. Um, but uh, what we do, we do a variety of different um, things and we want to let you know that we are here. Although we've been working on these rivers for years, this organization has been going on for twenty-two years. Um, but it started off as the Waukesha River Keeper Program and we have moved in onto all seven rivers now. Um, but because we are here on these rivers, we wanted you to know what we're doing and I'll let Dylan talk here in a minute. This is Dylan Coleman. He is your PD Rivers Lynch's River Project Coordinator. So he is working on the rivers that come into Marion County, other than the Lumber River and I've been helping our Lumber River Keeper Jeff Curry work on the Lumber River. Um, so he's going to take a little bit what he's doing, but I thought it would be a great opportunity for us to come in and just let the county council know what we're doing on these rivers. Um, and to let you know that we're looking forward um, to working um, to promote some ecotourism in the area. We think that we have the most beautiful and pristine rivers anywhere I've ever seen. Uh, I put Little PD River against any river in the world. Um, we have this beautiful area. Um, and we want to promote it and, and protect it and there's all, all kinds of opportunities for ecotourism. But with that being said, again, I wanted to come and introduce ourselves. Since we are working on these rivers, I thought it'd be a great idea to not take just a few minutes to let you know that we're Winial Rivers Alliance. We are nonprofit. I'm not here to ask you for anything. I'm here to let you guys know what we've been doing on these rivers and what we're doing to protect clean water because that's our mission. Protecting clean water and also protecting open spaces so that everybody can enjoy these beautiful areas. And a lot of areas don't have places like Mullins and Marion do. I mean, this is just a pristine place for natural environment in this area and a lot of places don't have that. And so we work with a lot of different organizations. You name it pretty much, it's conservation organization. We work with them. We go to the state house. We fight for clean water. We make sure we hold polluters accountable. We do cleanups. And again, I'm gonna let Dylan tell you a little bit more about, about that. We are monitoring the water. We're making sure the water's clean. Um, I don't know if any of you have ever heard of these new chemicals called forever chemicals PFAS, PFAS or either PFOS. We are monitoring the rivers for PFAS. Now this is a forever chemical. It is a uh, cancer-causing chemical that gets in your body and it does not leave. So we are finding this chemical on our rivers. Not a lot yet has been, data has been taken on our local rivers, but we are finding these chemicals. They are in our fish. So they are bio-accumulating in our fish. So if you have a catfish, which I love to eat, um, and then he eats a red breast that has the chemicals in him, it bio-accumulates into the catfish. So you're eating the catfish, you're getting PFAS. So this is why our organization is so important because we're working with DHEC. We're giving data to DHEC. DHEC's contacting us and saying, okay, Deborah, what can we do? Thank you guys. Thank you for getting along with us. Thank you for working with us. If we find out where these PFAS are coming from, we're going to stop it. We're going to work with DHEC and do whatever we can to stop the, a lot of them do come from chemical plants. And so we're working to stop some of that. Um, up on the Pocatalo, uh, the headwaters of the Black River, that's where our highest PFAS levels have been found in South Carolina. My Black Sandpit River Keeper is working on that now to try to find out exactly where those PFAS are coming from. Cause that's going into all water. And if you grew up like I did on the, on the river, I grew up fishing, swimming. I was fishing before I could walk and swimming by, I mean skiing, water skiing. By the age of five, I grew up on the Little PD River. Um, and I want my children and my children's children and their children to continue to be able to use these rivers, enjoy them and grow up like I did. And we got to protect that. So thank you for letting me speak. I'm gonna let Dylan tell you what he's been doing actually on these rivers. And that's how he wanted to do tonight is just let you know, let you guys know what we're doing. And we're going to start coming more to these council meetings. We're going to start getting more involved because Dylan is working on these rivers and he is local. But I'll hand it over to you, Dylan. Thank you all.
Hope everyone's doing okay this evening. Like Ms. Deborah said, I am the project coordinator for the Lynch's and PD Rivers, so Little PD, Big PD and the Lynch's. So that means my job takes me wherever those rivers flow, which is multiple counties throughout the state. But being from Marion, living here my entire life, I want to make sure above all that Marion is, like she said, has some of the most beautiful rivers in the, in the world, I feel like. But my work involves me doing water monitoring. So I monitor pH levels in the water, dissolved oxygen, fish need oxygen just like people. And E. coli level, so bacteria. The more E. coli you get, you have it in your body already, but the more you get can make you very sick. So a lot of my work is that, but I also organize volunteer cleanups and I've already done two in Marion County so far. Between those two cleanups, one in Britton's Neck and one in PD near the three oh one bridge, I've collected roughly around eighty pounds of trash from the banks and the water of those rivers. So moving forward, I'm going to be organizing more cleanups, more community events in the area. Which like I said, it takes me everywhere all over the state, but Marion's home is where I lay my head at night. I want to make sure my water's clean. So I'm looking forward to working with whoever wants to help me keep the water clean, promote clean water, fishing opportunities, all sorts of things moving forward. So looking forward to it. Uh, you'll see me a little bit more up here in the next few months or so. So thank you so much for having me here tonight.
I have a question for you, Mr. Coleman.
Sure.
Do you think these rivers, particularly the Little PD and the Big PD, would benefit from dredging?
Might be a question from a step bro.
We have to have navigable waters. So we do promote navigable waters. I'm not sure about what I would call dredging. Like Senator Williams and I were just discussing about cleaning some of the limbs out and some of the areas that are keeping it from being navigable. Um, when you start dredging, there could be metals and different things and that, and that, and that dirt and that, that you're bringing up and that they're not toxic until you do start bringing that up. For example, um, Georgetown Harbor, they're thinking about dredging that and I'm, I'm working with the professor Teal Hannib at the Coastal Carolina University and he's found all these metals in the bottom of the harbor. And they are not toxic until you start moving that. And then it becomes toxic. So I'm not going to tell you that I'm okay necessarily with dredging. Um, I believe there are other options um, that we could do that wouldn't be as invasive as dredging. We could remove some limbs and make sure that we have the river navigable. Because um, one thing with Winial Rivers Alliance, we want to make sure people get out there, fishable, swimable, drinkable water. We want people to be able to enjoy the rivers. So if it's not navigable, they can't do that. We kayak, we boat, um, we do all of that. So I believe in making it navigable. I don't think it needs dredging. Um, I don't believe uh, that we need to do that necessarily. No, sir. Does that answer your question?
To a degree, I, I think one of the concerns with people in my district, Brits like um, French, part of French, sitting there uh, rushing area is flooding. And how the two rivers come together and you see with some hurricanes that have come over the last seven, eight years uh, that the water's been allowed to come down, create dams, et cetera. And the flooding, it can create on our end, whether or not if the rivers were deeper, would it be less flooding?
As far as flooding goes, my mom and dad live on Little PD River and they flooded twice. They lived there over fifty years, never had water in the yard. And my daddy was a state trooper, retired state trooper. Um, but anyway, he, he, they lost everything twice. Uh, so, and they're a mile off of the river. So I understand that flooding is an, a huge issue um, in the area and want to do all we can. We are working with organizations uh, with Clemson and other organizations on nature-based solutions. I don't believe dredging is going to keep your river from flooding. But I, I, I did, I do not believe that. I do believe there are other nature-based solutions we can do. Some of those solutions may sound a little bit um, very far-fetched in our area. Uh, for example, um, making smaller little dams. Of course, that wouldn't work on a big river like Little PD, but for example Clemson University's talked about making these little small dams so the water can go down slower. Um, but I'm like, we're blowing up, they're blowing up beaver dams and you want to make a little dam? That's not going to work in our area. But we are looking at nature-based solutions. I do believe that conservation is huge. I believe it, conserving land as much land as we can helps downstream. I believe conserving land in North Carolina and we are doing that in North Carolina. We have a couple of properties there. Um, that's going to be a big thing. I think logging is, I'm sorry, I'm not opposed to logging by any means, so please don't think I am. I am, I think we need to have responsible logging. And, and now that you ask, I'll go ahead and say, I think we need to have um, uh, barriers. We need to have one uh, certain, should be logged all the way to the river because it causes erosion on the riverbanks. I believe in responsible logging. I believe in reforestation, not clearcutting. Um, because if you don't have these trees, they're not going to suck up the water by any means. So I believe in reforestation. Um, I do not, I believe in having um, buffers, like I said, a hundred-foot buffers um, on the rivers when you log. I believe there are so many other ways that wouldn't be as invasive as dredging. And I do not believe that the dredging is going to cause these rivers to keep from flooding. I do know that the water is rising and I do believe land conservation, reforestation are probably two of our best bets to prevent the flooding.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Little PD before for my seventy-six to the uh, Lakey Road, Old, Old Nipple Road.
Okay.
Those trees that are falling through out there because of the hurricanes, but you can hardly get through. And now, is there anything to be done in areas like that?
Yes, sir. Hey Alan, um, I believe that uh, Senator Kent, we, and I hope I'm not speaking for you. Um, I believe Senator Kent Williams has been um, in conversations with uh, the Corps of Engineers. People ask me often, I'm the executive director of Winial Rivers Alliance. I don't know if I said that or not, but people ask me often, Deborah, when you go clean out the river? You know, we're having trouble getting through, like you're saying, from the hurricanes and the trees falling and that's, I can't approve that. The Corps of Engineers because it is a scenic river. Uh, the only river that we monitor that is not a scenic river is the Waukesha. But because it is a scenic river, you do have to go to the Corps of Engineers to get approval to do that. And I am okay with cleaning some of that out. Again, I think it needs to be navigable. And we kayak and we boat. We want to make sure people can get in the rivers and enjoy them. Um, so I, I'm, I'm okay. I think that's not a bad idea at all, Alan. And I believe Ken is working on that, um, having that done. And um, I know that the Black River is doing some of that because we, we also on Rocky Point Community Forest, it's four hundred and sixty-two acres down in Georgetown. I don't know if you've heard of the new state park. We're the last property in the new, new state park in South Carolina. It's actually a water park um, that goes all the way through King Street and comes down. We're the last property in that park, but I know they've had issues, um, navigable issues. I know that Lumber River, they're starting to clean out some of Lumber River because people can't get boats through there. So I understand that. And because I grew up on the river, I want to be able to fish the river and swim the river and boat the river too. Um, so yes, sir. I think, I think we could clean some of that out, but the Corps of Engineers has, they have to prove that. Yes, sir. Thank you all. Any more questions? Thank you.
Appreciate you, Governor. Administrator update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of council and all that's in attendance. Just wanted to give a few brief updates. For our capital sales update, our airport will be reopening on November the sixth. We were again closed due to renovations and due to the expansion of our runway, but we will be open November sixth, so please come out and see us. Our animal shelter, we are going to be coordinating a town hall to discuss some of the changes and questions that we have, that our community has in regards to our animal shelter. And I think it's just important for us to open it up and have a town hall meeting to address those questions, because many people have questions on what we're doing, what direction we're going in. So that date will be to be determined, and I will let you know, and we'll reach out. Also, our parking lot, as you can see, we are in the final stages. It's been a long time coming, but we are doing the landscaping now. Next week, we will start painting the lines and having our parking lot pretty much complete. So in the next couple of weeks, we will be finished with the front parking lot, and we will have a ribbon cutting. And I hope to see all of you at that ribbon cutting, and we'll announce that date and let everybody know. Under miscellaneous, I just want to brief you. The state has what you would call opioid money funds for opioid recovery. And the, on this week, Wednesday, I met with the City of Marion, City of Mullins. We met to discuss how we can work together to have a plan on what needs to happen with our opioid funds. So we're working together, we're going to submit a plan together. We work with our Sheriff's Department, our EMS Department. And again, the administrator from Mullins and Marion were in attendance, so we're all coming up with a plan together that's going to work for our citizens here in Marion County. And that, and we also worked with Trinity Behavioral Healthcare. They were also in attendance and really is an integral part to what needs to happen for the opioid recovery, because it is, it is a problem in our community, and we want to be able to have the resources and put the people in place, the counseling in place, so that we can help these individuals. So I'll give more information as information comes. And finally, we just like to have a little bit of fun sometimes. So our county will be hosting our first candy walk for our community, our daycares, our schools. Any community members that want to come out on Monday, we will be having a candy walk beginning about eleven o'clock. You can come, view the decorations that we have up, get candy, just walk around and just really be a community event. Simple, but yet brings us all together. So I'm looking forward to that. Please come out if you have time. And then on Tuesday, as I've mentioned last meeting, our offices entered a contest for, a Halloween contest for decorating our offices, and the purpose of that was to collaborate, team build, build morale, and just bring all of our offices together. Although we work in the same area, sometimes we don't get to talk to each other, but this opened up that opportunity to do that. So Tuesday, the City of Mullins and the City of Marion administrators will be coming to judge those competitions, and we will announce our winners. So we're excited about that, and I hope if you all are available, please come out, and we look forward to seeing you. But that's all the updates that I have.
Pretty scary looking out there.
It is scary.
I forgot something at the beginning of the meeting. I have Councilman Robert Turner's proxy. Request and comment by members of council.
Yes, I have two comments. I want to acknowledge that the community in Centenary, that a series of meetings, Monday, and a meeting on the past weekend, which was attended by some of our fellow council members to restart the Centenary Fire, volunteer fire department. It was a very important meeting, we were successful in getting together to put together a board of directors. The board of directors actually met formally yesterday before they'll have a formal meeting, make sure everyone's known with each other. The next step is to then elect a chief and a deputy chief of the fire department, and their other partners, the Marion Board, Fire Department, who've been helping Mr. Washington. Friends and Nichols have been there participating, and we just didn't represent as well. So everyone's coming together to help this community, get their volunteer fire department started again, which will be important to safety and lowering insurance rates in that area. So I want to thank everybody who's been involved in that and asked someone to stay involved as we get this project off the ground. Also want to acknowledge great work that took place yesterday. I ran opening ribbon cutting for healthcare partners, opening a facility in Britton's Neck. That's going to be a great facility. We have a lot of elderly people who cannot get to Marion or go onto Conway, and this will be an opportunity for them to be able to receive service locally. So I'm very excited about that. And lastly, but not least, I want to acknowledge and thank Ms. Margaret Pittman, our recently retired director of the airport, who served thirty-nine years in that role. She provided great service and provided the county with an opportunity to develop and grow. And she hands it off to a great team who will continue to allow the airport to develop and grow with a new vision. And so I want to acknowledge Ms. Pittman's contributions to this county over thirty-nine years, and let her know that this county and this council is thankful for her contributions.
Want to do that in form of resolution?
I propose we offer a resolution to honor her thirty-nine years of service in Centenary County.
Second. Motion second, discussion. All in favor of the motion, Senator, if I would say, aye? Oppose likewise? Yeah, it's heavy. Mr. Chair. Mr. Ford.
I've got one. We had discussed something about, is it Marco or Rule Fire, who was it, who was going to try to get some more fire hydrants? You know, we, we discussed it, we appreciate that years ago, but it's kind of fallen in the cracks.
That was Marco Water, and I have not been in contact with them recently about the fire hydrants. It's been a couple of months, but we did speak about it. And what the issue is, is the lines. I've spoken with them, it's the lines that are connected under, that are connected from house to house, has to be so many feet. And so right now, they aren't long enough. So we've got to work with Marco and some engineers to extend those lines to allow more fire hydrants, which will in turn lower the insurances, insurance rate in that area.
Security. I have two appointments to make tonight. First, I want to appoint Lisa Seabrooks to the Marion County Planning Commission, and Ms. Janie Greis to the Marion County Economic Development Board.
Sir.
We have any motion?
Don't need a motion. Got it?
Yes, sir.
All right, we need an executive session for personnel and contracts.
Yes, sir.
Motion. Second, second, discussion. All in favor of the motion, Senator, if I would say, aye? Oppose likewise, the eyes have it. We're going to go back here. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We went into executive session for personnel and contracts were matter. No action was taken. We need to come out of the executive session and come back into our open meeting. Motion.
Second.
Second, in discussion. All in favor of the motion, Senator, if I would say, aye? Oppose likewise, the eyes have it. We're now back in open session.
Because if anything we can do at on record, support of Zach or if there's some payment or something to come out as a council. You know what I'm saying, I want him to know.
Did we think?
I've been praying for him, and I know y'all have too, but just something that would be a part of the record on this board. Is there anything we can do?
My fine too.
Or really?
Let him know that we're still thinking, because let me tell you, sometimes people do a wonderful job, and it's like, and I had done it.
Right.
And then you all of a sudden, you get about, like, you made that motion about the Navy Airport. Sometimes we forget too quick, and these people have done their lives, and Jack has done a wonderful job. I just think if anything we could do, my thing.
I can make a recommendation, maybe if we write a letter to Zach and we present that letter to council, and we sign the letter, you know, something to that effect, a letter.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. We'll get that together.
Does that need to be in form of motion? General consensus. All right. We're back in open sessions. Any action we need to take? Mr. Attorney?